Good evening. I'd like to call the city council's regular meeting for July 18th, 2023 to order. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Present.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. Before we get to the invocation, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Murphy, to report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council did meet in closed session this evening. As to item A, the matter of potential litigation, council received a report and gave unanimous direction to staff and the city prosecutor, or I'm sorry, the city attorney's office, to attempt a final round of negotiations to avoid litigation. If the negotiations are unsuccessful, then the city prosecutor's office has been authorized to initiate a civil code enforcement action to resolve the pending matter. The identity of the defendant and the facts surrounding that matter would be made available to the public after the defendant has been served, if that has to happen. And then, as I say, the negotiations are unsuccessful. The council also was briefed on item B, the conference with labor negotiator. No reportable action was taken as to that item. That is my report, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Mr. Jerry Jambasian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies, to provide invocation. Wonder Cleaners is located at 9136 Las Tunas Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, let's bow in prayer before our Lord. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask for your wisdom and guidance for the council meeting set before us tonight. I pray you would impart your wisdom and patience upon each council member on the dais for the agenda set before them. Your word instructs us to pray for those in authority over us. We pray for our county, our state, and federal officials, that they would make decisions that benefit all citizens. We are reminded that all the good things for us always happen at the local level. Lord, I think I know all of our city council members and support staff. I would think their number one priority is public safety. We see that every day displayed through our sheriff's dedicated team, our firefighters, and our public safety team, including all of our CERT members. We see that especially this week with our neighborhood watch meeting this Thursday evening. There's a reason we are the 15th safest city in California. It is because of Temple City's commitment to its citizens' safety. Father, with this current heat wave, we pray for the most vulnerable, our seniors and our young children. Thanks to our city for providing a cooling center at Live Oak Park. We also pray for the opportunities later this week with Wednesday's Concerts in the Park and Thursday Neighborhood Watch and Friday Campa Palooza at Live Oak Park. All these opportunities, we pray for safety. We ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jambasian. For tonight's pledge, we have the pleasure of having our president of our Temple City Chamber of Commerce, Mr. John Boari, leading us in the pledge.
Please put your right hand over your heart and join me as we begin the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, we do not have any ceremonial matters, no presentations. Next, we have public comments on items not listed on the agenda, and we do have one speaker, Ms. Cindy Hepler. Could you please come to the microphone?
Most of you know me. Cindy Hepler, I've been with, living in Temple City for over 40 years. I went to work within five years of moving in, so for 35 years, I was working and didn't see what was happening. I've been retired now for three years, and even though that I take care of my son and my mother, I'm around a lot. And I'm watching, even though I'm not participating in the neighborhood watch right now, I'm watching constantly houses and cars and stuff because I know by watching the news, you know, it's not safe. Anyhow, I like to mess around in my garden a lot and out in the yard, and I notice that Woodruff drivers are crazy. These cars will go 50 miles easy down the street because they don't have a stop sign. I'm here tonight asking if we could put stop signs on every corners of Primrose, Woodruff. Oak's already got one, you know, all these streets, Alessandra, whatever, and all the way down to Bald One, to stop this because about the middle of June, there was an elderly man that got, ran over on his bike. I don't know if it was his fault, but when I got home, the sheriffs and the truck that hit him was there for a very long time, and it made me very aware of, I've been watching this crazy drivers for a long time. And I know there's been a lot of accidents on my corner on Woodruff and Cloverly, and I just wish that the city would look into this because I'm watching it daily, these speeders, and they think that they, maybe they want to show off their car, I don't know what it is, but I feel like sometimes Irwindale Raceway, they go so fast. So that's what I'm here for. It's just, I did walk around for five hours on all the streets, visiting all these people that I've never met before, or some have, but didn't see them for a long time, and they were all willing to sign that up because they felt the same way. One gentleman wanted to come here because he thought that also Garibaldi is driving their fast, that street too. Anyhow, that's it. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hepler. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment. We have the consent calendar next. All items can be approved in a single motion unless council would like to pull any items for discussion, or we could have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any objections? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, for public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. For new business, we have item 10A, co-sponsor the 2023 San Gabriel Valley Noodle Festival with the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Cook, you want to start off the intro?
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council, and working with the new chamber team. We, they're looking to provide for some additional community benefits, and one of the ideas that presented tonight that Mr. Matsumoto will go over is a San Gabriel Valley Noodle Festival, and he'll talk some, about some of the specifics about that. John is here as well to answer any questions. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matsumoto.
Thank you, City Manager Cook. Good evening, Mayor Mann and members of the city council. Tonight before you, you have a request for co-sponsor sponsorship of a new event with the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. That's titled the San Gabriel Valley Noodle Festival. The date proposed for that is Saturday, October 21st. Currently, we do not have any conflicting events or programs on that date. The event proposed time would be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it would be a one-day event. The scope of the event would really mimic and follow the World Journal's Moon or Autumn Festival. If you recall from that event, we host our food vendor booths in the parking lot that's adjacent to City Hall. The middle walking path area of Temple City Park is where our community vendors would be placed, and then the chamber is proposing having additional food trucks along Golden West for this event. In terms of what's before the council tonight, there's a number of items that the chamber's asking for co-sponsorship with, that would be waiving of all fees and deposits for the use of Temple City Park and the Performing Arts Pavilion. Also utilizing a street banner over Las Tunas, approving use of the city's CEO logo as well as advertising and promotional materials, and approval of a special event permit. One thing of note for consideration is, right now, the chamber is tentatively thinking about hosting a beer garden. We have placed specific requirements in order to host a beer garden, and that would be done administratively, administratively by city staff if approved by the city council. So the requirements for the beer garden would be approval of an ABC license, a one-day beer license, partnership with a local nonprofit to sponsor the beer garden. The beer garden would need to be fully enclosed, have a minimum of two private security guards, as well as having at least one certified responsible beverage service server onsite at all times. So that's a tentative request by the chamber. They're still exploring if it's going to be feasible for them, but we just wanted to note that as part of this request in case for consideration by the city council. At this time, I'd like to invite Temple City Chamber of Commerce President John Boari to maybe provide a little bit more specifics on the event in terms of outreach to our local businesses for the noodle tasting, maybe some of the costs involved, and then also partnership with some of our local organizations, specifically like the school district and our local nonprofits. So I'll turn that over.
Mayor, before you go, can you?
Questions for Director Masuka?
Ask a question? Adam, when is the 100-year anniversary event?
So that's taking place before this event, so that'll be on Saturday, September 30th.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was in October sometime.
Typically, it is the fall festival.
Because it's usually the October fall festivals on.
Correct, correct. The school district scheduling this year, the only date they're able to do it within that timeframe was on September 30th. So there's, there is about a three-week buffer between the centennial event and this proposed noodle festival by the Chamber of Commerce.
And I know in the report, the city is probably going to pick up the tab on the sheriffs as part of our budget. Who's going to pay for the security guards for the beer garden?
That would be at the expense of the Chamber of Commerce. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Masuka?
What is a noodle event?
Pardon me?
What is it?
So really, it's a food sampling event, and I'm sure John could provide a little bit more specifics regarding that, but really, it's an invitation for different local restaurants to showcase their dishes, specifically noodle dishes, and the event would be set up as, different restaurants would have maybe their specialty noodle dish, and you would purchase, you know, a wristband to have a sampling from different restaurants, you know, noodle tasting menu. So the hope is to have roughly 20 to 30 food vendors, local restaurants, to be able to sample and taste. So it wouldn't be a full meal, but really just a way to, you know, experience and taste the different, you know, multiple vendors that are there, and hopefully generate interest in actual restaurants and locations that are, that are in the community.
And that, follow-up to that question, so it's not just noodles, there's going to be other food items, right? And food trucks, I'm assuming there are no, there might be some noodle trucks out there, I guess, but it sounds to me like there's going to be an array of food items there. Sort of what we used to call tasting events, I guess. Now we call them noodle events, I guess.
Can I, do you mind if I, good evening, once again, John Boari, CEO at the Temple City Chamber. This event is almost exactly what you're saying, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Chavez, in that it is, there's a lot of food festivals or food tastings that happen around the region, the San Gabriel Valley, and we identified this as a gap. A lot of dumpling festivals happen. San Gabriel has a Dumpling and Beer Festival. Santa Anita does some different API-style food festivals. But as we try to really highlight some of the uniqueness in Temple City, the chamber went through and sort of identified what was a theme that we could identify that was accessible. Because part of this is also introducing people, maybe they don't, maybe they don't know about the diverse cultural opportunities here in the city. So we identified noodles as sort of an entry point, that someone might, everybody sort of knows what a noodle is, whether you're, you know, API, whether you're Italian, whether, you know, whatever it might be, noodles exist in a lot of cultures. And so we thought this is a great entry point. So what'll happen, if, a little more detail than Adam provided, was that folk, it's a free festival, generally, right? There's activities, there's booths, youth activities, entertainment. We're going to program a stage with local entertainment from the schools and others. But then, in order to do the tasting, there'll be a wristband or a passport purchased where you get a certain number of tastings. You come up, you give them your ticket, they give you the dish, you know, six to 10 bites worth of noodles, and then you go on to the next one and do the same. That'll be a low cost, roughly $25 for five tastings or six tastings if they do pre-order. That'll give people basically 25% of the noodles available, they could try those. And then, in addition to that, the vendors could sell other items as well that would enhance that. In fact, there are a lot of food trucks that are noodle-focused, and so, or have a noodle dish as part of their offering. We're talking to a number of folks in sort of prelim. We didn't want to get ahead of ourselves, we wanted to make sure we came here before we really went out there widely, but I can tell you, we've talked to a number of Temple City restaurants about participating. We think that there's approximately 15 that would be Temple City, that are in Temple City, that would be available to do this, just on estimation, we haven't talked to all of them yet. There's only about 60 restaurants total in the city, right? And so, and not all of them are, offer noodles as an option.
There's how many?
60.
Are you limiting, are you limiting it to only restaurants that have some type of noodle dish, or?
For the noodle tasting, yes. And so there, we are going to go outside the area, outside the city beyond those folks. They'll have to pay a little more. Our cities, our restaurants will be prioritized and given first right to participate. We also are planning on compensating the restaurants for the tasting, so that they're actually getting money, so it's not just a freebie, we're not looking for donations, especially our restaurants here in Temple City. We want this to be something that's of value to them, that they don't have to give, that they actually at least break even with staff time and product. They may not make, they're not going to make their month's worth of revenue in one day, but it's an opportunity to get them exposure in the region. We'd also reach out to a couple other folks that may not be based in Temple City that would add and enhance the program. We're reaching out to Panda, I know it's a public meeting, so I don't want to get too much out, because nothing's confirmed yet just yet, and other, and other larger restaurant chains or others that could, again, they could actually pay to be there and be a part of it and sort of generate some revenue. Like I said, activities for kids, entertainment, activities generally. For community organizations, we're looking to offer, if they can bring their own tent, again, fire code and self and safety code. If there's really no event, tent cost, it would be a complimentary tent space allowed for members of the chamber that are the nonprofits, which are most of them in the area, as well as others. And then with the school district as well, we've been already talking to them about how we can work together to be a partner in this activity. So we anticipate this to be a community event. This is a first-time event, so I'll tell you, we are purposely being intentional about scale, recognizing that we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, no pun intended, in that we're, we're trying to make this proof of concept. We believe very confidently that this will be successful. We've got a, my team and I have had a lot of success putting on festivals, large-scale festivals before, and so we're excited about what this would bring for an opportunity to, to bring attention to our city. We've already talked to a couple media outlets about news coverage in advance, in promotion of the KTLAs, the ABC sevens, to get Temple City as part of that conversation, in the news about places to be and things to do. And so that's sort of a general overview, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about this partnership.
Maybe we'll start with Councilmember Sternquist. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I think it sounds fun.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Are you going to have booths with other products besides the noodles and stuff? Because I know in the past, we've, some of the events we've had, they've kind of turned into a whole smorgasbord of things, and I don't know, I think it took away from the focus of.
Right. The food is focused on noodles. Obviously, like, we'll have somebody.
But it's going to be food, but are there going to be people selling jewelry there and things like that?
That's not the intention.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
We'll probably have, we'll probably have more other Temple City businesses that want to have booths that are not selling, but more informational. So we've talked to, like, for instance, Optum across the street.
Sort of what we do at the summer concerts.
Exactly. Exactly. This is community, really community benefits versus revenue generation festival.
And I noticed by the report, you're only, it's only going to be from 11 to 4. That's kind of cutting yourself short a little bit. It seems like a very ambitious project, and it's only going to be for five hours.
Part of the reason is about the noodle, the restaurant staffing. We've talked to them about what their scale is, and they've said, like, either make it a dinner event that focuses on dinnertime, or make it a lunch event. And so we thought the daytime, just, then we don't have to deal with lighting, we don't have to deal with, you know, all the other aspects of a safe event.
Yeah, that's right, because in October, it'll be daylight savings.
Yeah. So we're sort of recognizing that. And again, we're, we're confident that we can make, you know, you give people that timeframe, they're going to show up if they want to be there.
All right. Makes sense. Thank you.
Great question, though.
Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Yu?
No, not really. I think Mayor Protem asked all the questions, so.
Councilmember?
No, I just, you asked all the, all the ones I need to know, so, yeah.
Councilmember Viscara?
Before you mentioned it, I was going to say, I watch KTLA every morning, and they're very good about covering things like this, so I would encourage that.
Yeah, we're excited. They, oftentimes, they like us to go to studio, like, I've done this before, they go to the studio. My goal is to, like, get them to come here, so we can stand out with the council out in front of a restaurant, say, here's what we're doing, try this, and the reporter eats noodles and is very excited.
Actually, just started one question. How, how are you planning on to advertise it to the world?
Yeah, so in addition to the, the local, you know, community newsletters and communications that we have locally, we're partnering with some other outlets to do promotion through other neighborhoods. So we actually have a network, if you're not familiar, there is a network of chambers of commerce that we're a part of, and we're actually going to be inviting our neighboring chambers to suggest or nominate a local restaurant in their community, and then we will then feature that sort of restaurant as part of this. So the bulk will be offered by Temple City, but if we go to some of our neighboring, I mean, you all know that this, the whole region has some tremendous value, and that then attracts them, and we're working on how we can get people to sort of come and show their local pride and, and bring those neighborhoods very specifically. Also through earned media, I mentioned earlier, working with our media outlets. I've got a contact that we work with at LA Times Food, that always is interested in promoting us. We also work with other online, I don't want to call them blogs, but digital news sites from Thrillist to others like that that get, and target, really, we're targeting foodies, right? The folks that work there. And I can't, I hate to say it, but the truth is, working with, with influencers and Instagram reaches a lot of people. We're part of the San Gabriel Valley Eats food group on Facebook, and they've got, like, 40,000 people that sign up to them. And so there is very targeted engagement online through digital media. We're not going to, this year, we're not going to do a lot of, I don't think, any ad buys per se, but earned media and partnership media in order to get the word out to the right audience. Again, we're, we're targeting 3,000 people. I mean, this isn't going to be 50,000 people. I mean, I don't think we can handle 50,000 people. It'd be great if that was our problem, but it's really targeting a realistic modest number for a five-hour event, right?
Any other questions? Okay. With, with that, I'd like to just open the public comment first to see if there's anyone who has wished to speak on this item.
Good evening again, council members. The assumption was that this was going to be something like World Journal, but it isn't. And I guess I'm just worried about the $25 cost, I guess, and how it's all going to work out, because usually all of our events at the park are free. Pretty much, people come out, if they want to buy food, they buy food out of their own pocket, so I'm not sure how this is going to work. I mean, at first, I thought, all right, how are you going to keep everybody out of the park except those that paid? But now I realize that you're going to be wearing a wristband and then you're in line for the food. So I assume that people don't have any problem in paying $25 for this, but I hope there's a sponsor for it. I, I think it's a great thing. Anything that brings people to Temple City is good, so I'm in favor of it. It's just that I'm not sure how the food aspect is going to work out. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jambasian. Any other public comments on the site? All right. Seeing none, we move into, any final council questions or comments? Councilmember Sternquist? No, no discussion? Well, I guess you said you liked it.
We haven't had one, so I think, anything that brings, like Jerry said, brings the community together and is an opportunity to highlight our restaurants and even, John, as you said, some of our neighboring restaurants. I know we have people from Roseme who come to Temple City, and Temple City goes, Temple Cityans go other places, so I think it's a great opportunity, and we'll definitely see how it goes, so.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
No, I'm fine with it. I think it sounds exciting, sounds like a good event, looking forward to it. I had a few questions that I had answered by City Manager Cook earlier yesterday, and so everything sounds good to me, and I look forward to it and hope we have some good weather. And to see, October 21st, we, hopefully the heat wave will be over by then. I don't know. And hopefully it won't be raining. You never know, but, no, it's, it sounds great, and, and you know, Jerry, you had a good point with the wristbands and stuff, but you know, St. Luke's has kind of been doing something similar with that for a while. I think it's due to the exchange of money, they don't want everybody exchanging money at booths. So I figured, you know, if they want to eat, they'll buy a wristband or whatever, and if they don't, they don't, they don't have to, and I'm sure they'll, you know, it sounds to me like if families come, they'll have events for kids, and then if they want to just listen to the entertainment, they can do that. So, yeah, I think it'll work out good. Thank you.
Councilmember Yu?
Oh, I really like the idea. I just, and everything said, it made a lot of sense. I just think that perhaps because of this centennial, you know, festivity is still going on, maybe there's just some way that we can tie that into this noodle festival together, so maybe, I don't know, serving centennial noodles, I don't know, that doesn't sound quite right.
Well, maybe the Historical Society can have a booth or something.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I think it's great, I think.
Councilmember Viscara?
I support it, and I think it's, the more of these that we do, this type of thing, the better, because we're showing that the city government is engaged with the community and that we're, we're doing things that people find interesting, or a segment will anyway. It's a good thing.
Thank you. And I echo everyone's comments. I do want to say, just from my current role as the council liaison to the chamber, this event does have a, it resonates in a special way because of a lot of the discussion about the direction of the chamber with respect to kind of being in alignment with the concerns that we have as a city. And, and all of us have heard time and time again that, you know, we have become really a foodie destination, and so I just want to thank, you know, John and the chamber board for recognizing that and trying to leverage that, right? And, and another thing is, in a way, I want to call this event kind of an experimental kind of launching point for the chamber as well, is, is, I mean, no pressure, not, no pressure intended for John and the, and the board, but in a way, I, I think it's a, it's a good litmus test of how well and how far we've come in terms of what the chamber had done in years past versus what we're trying to do now. And I wholeheartedly agree that the direction that this event represents is the direction we would like to move forward as a community. So I'm also pleased to hear council support for this because I believe the chamber's success, both in the short and long term, depends a lot on us working together and identifying opportunities. But of course, I've said this many times, I've always felt like the ideal scenario is the chamber kind of takes control of its own destiny, in a sense where you can really show us a different side of what the chamber is capable of doing. So I, I wish this event will become a great success and kind of sets the tone for other things that the chamber can plan and do in the future. And like you said, not, not only just shine more attention on Temple City restaurants, but... And like you said, not only just shine more attention on Temple City restaurants, but just Temple City in general, right? In a way, my ulterior motive behind this that I hope happens is this generates more interest in the chamber itself, right? Because it will show that our chamber is capable of hosting events and being involved, being very active, being a very active member in the Temple City community. So I wholeheartedly support it and certainly wish John, Yu, and the rest of the board. And of course, I thank you Director Matsumoto for being a key partner and representing the city and in working with the chamber on this. So I'm very excited. So with that, may we have a council motion on this item?
Greg, do we need to do the whole thing, or can I just?
I think a motion to accept staff's recommendation would be great.
Okay, so, Mayor, if it's okay, I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Unless there's any objections, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Vizcarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. All right, we're looking forward to it, John.
John, a suggestion. If you ever decide that a golf tournament would work, count me in. I'll be glad to assist.
Okay, go cheer.
All right. Next, though, we move to update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. Just to point out, one item on tonight's consent calendar was item E, the acceptance of the pavement rehabilitation project. That is the completion of our latest roadway project of about four million dollars, which took care of literally about twenty percent of the city. So thank you for your support, and thank you to the patients of the community as we went through that process. At your last meeting is, or two meetings ago, you also authorized staff to move forward with a seven million dollar project to take care of roads that were in very poor condition as well. We'll be bringing that to you, back to you in the next couple of months for authorization to bid. Part of that process, so that to kind of take away of administrative step, will be for me to accept the completion of the project as well. But I'll obviously be reporting back to you as the council and giving you updates as necessary. But just to give some context as well, that'll, for, within the next twenty-four months, we'll have completed about eleven million dollars of improvements in the community with our curb and gutters, or some of our sidewalks, and primarily with our roads in the city. So thank you for that continued support as we move forward. That's it for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. And next, we have an update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two pieces of legislation that have been signed that are of some interest to Temple City. First, Assembly Bill 43 actually allows a decrease in speed limits even below the eighty percent on the warrant, which, as you know, has long been the standard for setting speed limits. There are a number of conditions for that. They vary on state highways and local roads, but it's something that I think is really worth myself and the city engineer digging through and then coming to the council with the city manager to present some ideas for lowering speed on some of the streets where we haven't wanted to do a speed study to lower it, because we've been afraid that we would actually have to raise it under the old law. So this gives us a new tool, and I think it may be one worth us looking into.
And did you say that's passed or it's proposed?
It has passed, yes.
It has passed.
It has passed.
Well, it's appropriate, given Ms. Hepler's comments tonight, that it's something we certainly can look into to help that situation.
Absolutely. The second is Senate Bill 329, which passed in the last week or two, and we do have to dig into. The state legislature has understood that city council salaries statewide have generally lagged behind the costs, really, the cost of your time, lagged behind the cost of living. So as you may remember from previous actions, the state set initial salaries for city councils and then gave a formula by which you could raise them. Well, Senate Bill 329 sets a new standard, and then obviously a new formula by which you can raise it from that new standard. But given Senate Bill 329, given the fact that these go into effect after an election, I thought it would be worth bringing you tonight to see if you would like a full report on that and what that might mean to Temple City. If you would, nod your heads. If I see a couple heads, then I'll prepare a full report, but.
Does that, does that have an impact on what we've already done?
Yes, it actually would. The council did take action to increase salaries following the next election. Very appropriate action under the previous, it was based on a five percent per year from your previous amount to the new amount. This would even go beyond that. It would be about a twenty percent increase from the number that you have. So as I say, I'm happy to bring it to you and more, once I've more fully digested it myself.
I would not, I wouldn't mind hearing further on that.
Any objections at the report?
No. Okay, I'd be happy to, and I think it's.
We're all nodding.
I think it's worth the public hearing and understanding what the legislature said in deciding to adopt this and their understanding of what city, what local council members go through. So I'll be happy to put that together and bring it to you in time for you to act on. Thank you so much.
Sorry, Mayor Mann, one more thing. We do have a Neighborhood Watch meeting, this, as Mr. Gembezi had noted in his invocation, this Thursday, 5:30 at La Russa Elementary School.
Okay. Where is it going to be at La Russa? In a cafeteria or?
Generally is in the cafeteria, I believe.
It hasn't been there for a long time.
Yeah, if you come in through the parking lot.
Yeah, I know where the parking lot is in the back.
And, yeah.
Okay.
And, Mr. Cook, we also have a number of other things, right? I think Campa Palooza?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. So, Mr. Matsumoto can come up and talk about Campa Palooza this weekend as well?
Yeah. If we could bother Director Matsumoto for.
Sure, not at all.
I know there's a lot going on, so, but you know all about it.
There is. So Campa Palooza is coming up this Friday and Saturday. It's our overnight camping event at Live Oak Park. We have about eighty-five spots reserved out of our hundreds, so we're actually still taking reservations if any, if there's any last-minute desires to participate in the event.
Will it be allowing any tents inside an air-conditioned area?
Unfortunately not, but we do have that as a cooling location, so our campers are more than welcome to hang out in the community center. The festivities will begin about four o'clock. Part of the registration, we have Next Burger. It's a food truck that's going to be serving meals there. We've also secured the Columbia Space Center Museum to do some workshops. Our theme is an out-of-this-world theme, so it's a space theme. We'll also be showing an outdoor movie, WALL-E, and then we'll also have some telescopes out for viewing of what stars that we do have, and also the moon as well. So we're really looking forward to the event. We, you know, have a great turnout, great response to that. So again, it's this Friday, festivities start at four o'clock. It is registration-based, so you do need to register for that. And it concludes with a continental breakfast on Saturday morning and then just a breakdown of the campsites. And hopefully, you know, we've always received great feedback. It's a great opportunity for families that may be on the fence about going all the way out into the wilderness and camping. You can do it locally, still have, you know, restroom access and close by home, so you don't have to make a hours-long drive to go camping, so we're excited about it.
I'll have to admit it, the last one that I went to, I used the excuse to go home and check on the dog around five o'clock in the morning. I never went back. Until we had a breakdown, Shane said, "Where'd you go?" Yeah, it was nice. I mean, it was a good. I think Brian was at that one too, weren't you, Brian? I think you were at that one.
I've made a couple over the years.
Brian's fine, is he?
Uh, no, I am not.
And Director Matsumoto, can you tell us a little bit about the cooling center hours that we have going on?
Sure. So whenever we have roughly a ninety-five-degree day, we open up our community center at Live Oak Park as a cooling center. The cooling center hours are eight AM to ten PM. We do operate those seven days a week, so even if it's a Sunday, we're still operating as a cooling center at those times. In our lobby area, we have seating. We do have a new TV that's up that, you know, generally we're displaying kind of network TV, but, you know, if the cooling station is activated, with the cooling station activated this weekend, I'm sure we can use that as an opportunity to maybe do some women's World Cup viewing for those that are in attendance. But, yeah, the facility is accessible to anybody that does need that, or vulnerable populations, as Mr. Gembezi had mentioned. You know, all of our outlets are available for charging electronic devices as well. We see some usage, typically it's, you know, middle of the day to early evenings, but we haven't, you know, experienced anything too overwhelming in terms of utilization of the cooling center. Roughly maybe, you know, five, five, maybe ten people are utilizing it, so, you know, fortunately, that means, you know, most people have access to, you know, climate-controlled living quarters, but it is available for those that are in need.
Thank you. And.
Senior meals?
Yes, I can give an update on that as well. So our senior meal program.
Actually, you read my mind, that was my next question.
Yes. Did return onsite last Wednesday on July 12th. It's been three years since we've been able to offer congregate dining meals. A lot of that was because we did have a strong desire and a larger population that participated in the delivery, senior meal deliveries. And also part of that was the YWCA requesting that we maintain the delivery service. We were one of the last to transition to congregate in, congregate meals service. Overall, it was a really strong response. We had ninety seniors participate starting last week. We did have a small waitlist of about ten seniors that came kind of towards the latter part, asking if there were, you know, still meals available. So we were going to increase those numbers this week to accommodate those that had requested that. So we're excited. We view the senior meal program as an anchor senior services program that we can then provide wraparound services to, you know, to that demographic and that population. So we're excited to have our.
Is it every day, Adam?
It is, five days a week, Monday through Friday, and then meals are served at eleven, eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven, I'm sorry, eleven-thirty.
And so are we, I couldn't understand, didn't understand what you said. So are we still doing, we're doing the in-person, but are we also delivering meals?
No, so that.
Okay, so not delivering?
That concluded with our return to in-service dining. The YWCA does offer a Meals on Wheels program. That's specific to truly homebound seniors, so there's still an ability to have meals delivered. It's just through a different service offered by the YWCA.
So we would refer them to that.
Correct. Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor Mann.
And thank you. All right, next, we go to council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports?
Mayor, I'd like to report out on the Los Tunas Drive Streetscape Ad Hoc Committee. So Councilmember Vizcarra and myself and the city manager and staff, we met last Friday as a follow-up to the Los Tunas Drive Streetscape discussion. So we, staff had brought back previous schemes that the council have seen at one point by architect David Gooddale, so we went through the different schemes consisting, if I can just, can't go down the list, tree canopies, blade signage, banners, trash cans, street furniture, planters, dining tables, awnings, and so we look at different concepts and we figure, we, the ad hoc committee provides some suggestions to staff, so we're going to meet one more time to solidify some options for the council to consider with timing and also updating costs. So basically, coming by with a menu of options for the council to consider, including funding sources as well. So we'll probably meet one more time and then come back with some options and also update the pictures, because some of those pictures are kind of old, so we want to, you know, bring back to the council.
Anything?
No, we're just trying to get the most bang for our buck that we can without, we don't want to be too extravagant, but we do think we have some good ideas to improve the overall look of the area in question.
Councilmember Sternquist?
I just wanted to ask, is there, if the council desired, would there be any way to have a list of low-hanging fruit items that could possibly be entertained sooner than later, so that you get a jumpstart on this?
Actually, I'd say the majority are that way already.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And some of those options, the council may remember, were really pilot projects where the council would provide certain seat monies for certain things, not entire Los Tunas. Maybe we'll pick a few spots to install these options. Some maybe more uniform, some maybe just certain spots. So our goal is to bring back to the council a menu of options for consideration.
Well, thank you. And do we know when that next meeting will be, or that's yet to be set up?
We're scheduling, we're scheduling that next meeting, so we were looking towards the first meeting in September to come back to the council.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to also point out that a lot of this discussion will dovetail directly into the other ad hoc that Councilmember Sternquist and I are on regarding development of city property at 9050 Los Tunas Drive. So I appreciate the work of the Los Tunas Ad Hoc, but I just want to mention for staff's consideration that there's a nexus between the two and that we shouldn't forget that that committee also exists. All right, any other reports? No? Okay. All right, we go to council items separate from the regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Sternquist.
A couple of things. On August 16th, the mosquito district is going to have a booth at Concerts in the Park, and so I think it'll be really timely, and it will pass out some items. I'm not sure if they're going to bring the big blow-up mosquito thing or not. Have they contacted you yet?
They did. I reached out, sorry. Yes, I do, I have been in contact with the vector control, so we'll have a booth set up. We're still finalizing the details. I don't believe they're going to be bringing out the inflatable, but I can double-check and verify.
What is it, like a large mosquito or something?
Remember the big black one they brought out? It's not.
You were wearing it.
No, that was the, that's the outfit.
Oh, that's the, oh, I see.
You wore the outfit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. Maybe I want to forget.
Anyway. Oh, the, it's kind of like the Atkins trash truck, you know, the blow-up?
Oh, okay.
Oh, so it's for kids?
So it's a big mosquito, yes, but it's shaped like a mosquito.
It's like a plaything?
Oh, I see, okay.
So I'm not sure, but I can ask them if it's available.
I can inquire as well.
Okay. And then I, just to kind of update you, since I have just seen this kind of all over Facebook the last few days, but Susan Rubio, Margaret Butts, who was the past mayor of Monrovia, and Bob Archuleta have announced that they are all running for the congressional seat representing the 31st district.
Yeah.
So I thought that was news-worthy to let you know.
I saw that, yeah.
And I think that pretty much.
All right, thank you. Next is Councilmember Vizcarra.
I don't have anything to start.
Thank you. Councilmember Yu?
Nothing, but earlier, Mr. City Manager and I kind of talked about, to a point of cooling center that we might look at, what else we can offer to make it more attractive, you know, to folks, more inducing for them to come.
Ice cream?
Hey, I'll come, I'll come for that.
Okay. Let's go.
That's it.
Mayor Protam Chavez?
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things. I know we're making good time tonight. Based on our discussion. Based on our discussion from, I think it was last council meeting regarding the events on 4th of July, I had talked to our city manager about perhaps putting together a more detailed report that would include not only the numbers, but maybe some observations or suggestions from staff of what we can do next year to alleviate some of the problems that we had this year and past year. So with the mayor's approval, I would ask that this matter be set on the agenda for next week, our next council meeting, is that, or is it the second council? Second meeting in August for a report and discussion, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good idea, and I know it's a discussion we have on a, every year around July 4th, so it warrants updates. I think council should have all the information available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion.
And good news, our eight-to-10-year-old All-Star team from Leibok Park, who as you know, won district last week, the tournament that I was overseeing, moved on to what we call section, which consists of four districts, Azusa, Laverne, and Upland. And tonight, they won that. So now they are moving on to state championships, which begin on Saturday. If you recall. What age group? Eight-to-10-year-olds, although most of them are 10. If you recall, a few years ago, our eight-to-10-year-old team from Temple City National actually won state. And I probably shouldn't have done this, but I, at the end of the, or just before they won district, I went up to the kids after the game and I said, "You know, if you guys win, we can have you at the council meeting and introduce you, and you can be on TV," and they were all excited about that. And so now they keep playing, so hopefully we'll have some state champions again here to congratulate. They have a very good team. You'd be surprised, some of these 10-year-olds are pretty big. And, but they've done well, and actually, they lost yesterday for the first time in the entire tournament season, and they came back though to win tonight, so that's exciting for the city and for Temple City American League, so, good stuff. And last thing, on a different note, I know we've all noticed that there is, I wouldn't say a problem, that's maybe not the correct word, but there is issues dealing with the homeless that have occurred more frequently in Temple City Park. I understand that there was an incident today on Las Tunas involving one of our transients. And, I mean, I wish I was smart enough to come up with a solution. I don't know that there is one, but I know we have a homeless ad hoc. I think it's two, I think it's Councilmembers Sternquist and Viscara. I'm wondering if maybe we could hear what's going on with that, if anything. And we haven't heard anything more about the project that I think Pastor Kelty was working on, on the bathroom situation? Or showers? Is that a dead issue? I don't know. But maybe, maybe at the next meeting, we could get an update on what, if anything, is going on and what we can do to not only help the homeless, but also, of course, and the community as a whole. Because I don't know if anybody else has been getting complaints, but I have received a few complaints, primarily because I was at the park for all those days. Families who are not, are reluctant to actually come and use the facilities at Temple City Park during the day. And that's primarily because they're concerned about the homeless, whether those are true concerns or not. I don't have any personal knowledge of it. I know we have incidents every once in a while, but it's something that we're not going to be able to, I think, ignore too much longer, and it's an issue I think we have to resolve. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you aware of any cities that are having any luck in mitigating?
Well, that's just the thing. Well, not only other cities, but counties, states. I mean, it's not our problem, it's a very large problem. There's no question about it. But I'm just wondering if there's something unique to Temple City that we could either do or help or figure out, you know, that's something for our city. Because there's no one, I can certainly recognize, there's no one solution to the entire program. I don't know that there ever will be. Certainly, we don't have the, you know, obviously, there's old saying, "The way to combat homelessness is to provide them with homes." Well, certainly, we don't have the facility to do that here in Temple City necessarily, but maybe there's something we can do. I know we've worked with Lakota. Have we, have we ever had somebody from Lakota actually come and speak to our council? Brian, do you know? I can't remember that we've ever.
I don't think we have.
I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's time to get somebody from there to come and speak to us personally about what they do or what they can do or, and what they can't do maybe is even more important. But anyway, I just kind of throw that out there, because, you know, it's not a situation that's going to go away and we just need to kind of put our heads together. Maybe it's time, I know in the past, we've met with the pastors and stuff, and maybe it's time to meet with them, because the churches seem to be the ones that are kind of on the, you know, battle lines there, dealing with that issue primarily as far as our city is concerned, so, anyway.
I just wanted to share that I'm looking for more update, but.
And while you're looking for that too, there's a, there was a really great, I don't know if anybody saw it on the Spectrum News, on the, what's it, the Balden Park facility cog, I think? Who had, who?
Escrow, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and how that, how successful that has been, actually. And it's worked as a transition. So there are solutions, and of course, whether that would work in Temple City, I don't know, but there are other things perhaps we can look at, so.
Right, Becky Shellman, I saw her, the mayor of Monrovia, a couple of days ago, and she shared that Catherine Barker came out to the city and had a meeting with her and the staff, and someone came out from Lakota and, or some other organization, I can't think. She said it was a really productive meeting. They spent, she said she came with a slew of people that were heavily involved in relocating the homeless into housing. And maybe we can reach out to.
Well, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt. I would ask that maybe staff contact them, and, I mean, they should be contacting us, but obviously, if it takes us to contact them, who cares?
She was surprised that they stayed a good time, it was a good meeting, so.
Good, well, those are the kind of things I'm talking about, that maybe we can kind of be on the more of proactive part rather than waiting for things to happen, so, anyway. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. And maybe to just segue off of that topic, it's, we kind of alluded to this at one of the past law enforcement sheriff's meetings that we had, because we know there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. Lakota is one, our deputies are another, you know. We know, Councilmember Sternquist talked about Supervisor Barker. She talks highly of the Met teams and how the county has, in the recent budget, is adding an influx of money and investing in that. So, yeah, I think it's good for us to be on the forefront of at least understanding what's happening here. So I would concur. As to other matters, I do want to just, another shout-out to our chamber for last week, last Wednesday, they had a successful mixer at Cloverleaf Bakery. We had, had a good turnout, and I just want to thank Amy and Tech for hosting, because they normally close at 5:00.
Was it, they're normally closed at 5:00?
Yeah, yeah, so they opened and extended hours. I mean, they were kind of shut down already, but they had the space for the chamber and everyone who was participating available. So that was good. I think that's part of kind of the broader discussion of the chamber being more active and kind of taking the steps, and this was another example of that. So hope that certainly continues.
I went in there on Sunday morning and got chastised for not having attended by the staff.
Well, that's because you're a regular, so.
Yeah.
Not having a what?
I didn't go to the chamber bidding.
Yeah, unfortunately, I was at the ball field, I couldn't go there. It looked like a good event, though.
Yeah, it was good, and I want to thank our deputies for also being there. They were always a welcome sight, and I know a lot of residents and business owners frequently like to talk to them as well, so. Anyway, I know, I won't, I won't repeat what Director Matsumoto and Mr. Cook had talked about in terms of all our events, but summer is a busy time for us, but that's great, because we always talked about, just in the context of what happened during COVID, with a lot of things kind of either discontinued, halted, completely, you know, stopped for about two years, I just want to just say, relatively speaking, this is certainly our way of getting back in the swing of things. And I think that's a good thing for our community to be a part of. And also, I know we have another meeting in August, but it's never too early to mention National Night Out, which is August 2nd, I believe, on a Wednesday. So that's always a great event to be a part of, kind of dovetails right into our concerts. And, yeah, just to every, everyone out there, stay cool. The heat wave is coming hard and fast, even though we've been blessed with a relatively cool June. So again, thank you for the update on the cooling center. And with that, we move on to, we will recess to our successor agency meeting. So I would like to get a roll call for the successor agency.
Agency member Sternquist? Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member Yu?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman?
Here, we have a consent calendar on item three.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, maybe have a roll call vote, please.
Agency member Sternquist? Agency member Viscara? Agency member Yu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none, no communications. Now we have public comments on the successor agency. Are there any public comments? I don't think we ever had one. So we'll close public comments. Next, update from executive director and agency council? No updates. Matters from agency members? Seeing none, we adjourn the successor agency and we resume our regular city council meeting. We move on to additional public comments. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Thank you again, Mayor and council members, Jerry Jim Bazian. After listening to the comments tonight, especially regarding our homeless people that we have here, I'm convinced that time is right. I have a million ideas, a lot of them are no good, but this one could work. And to enlist the chamber again and have a town hall meeting at the women's clubhouse on an evening, that would be good. And invite Supervisor Barker and our interim captain, Mesa, and also our pastoral staff and any of the movers and shakers, including Lakota, to come and to speak to our community around, about the homeless problem. And I think it'd be good. I think the timing is correct and right, and pretty much like a Neighborhood Watch type of thing, but geared towards our unhoused people. So I think if at all possible, if we can get that going, it would be great. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Bazian. Any other comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments, and we are adjourned. Have a good night.